Wow. I will call the February 27th meeting as a Noblesville Council to order at 7 o'clock. Ian Zagowski.
The leaders and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This leads when you call the roll.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Pressey, you have a form.
Thank you. I'd like for approval of the executive session memorandum of January 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the executive session memorandum for February 13th.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Approval of the minutes from our February 13th meeting.
Mr. President, I would motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes of our February 13th meeting. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. That also passes. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. There are white cards out front. If anybody has any comments, you can fill that out and pass it along to our clerk. I don't have any cards yet, but we will skip over the mayor's comments tonight. Council committee reports. I'll start with public safety. We met on February 14th, 11:30 or 11 o'clock. Chad Canet and Chief Mitchell went over an update on the fire protection contract for Noblesville Township, which is the unincorporated part of Noblesville City. The numbers were up to 286 more runs than last year. About 40% of the runs are fire and 60% are EMS. The Noble Axe program, the integrated health program that we have in Noblesville decreased the multiple runs to the same address and also decreased the overall expense for these runs. So that's another feather in the cap for the Noble Axe program. It's difficult to measure the prevention because the numbers go up, but it's just hard to measure that effect. Both departments are putting together a three-year plan for future staffing needs as we grow because it takes about three years to hire a new firefighter or police officer. Chief Mann says we have three more to hire and we will be fully staffed in our police We went over a lot of the crime data. A lot of the 20 biggest businesses have the most runs. We went over those. Chief Mann then reviewed the needs for the city's growth, the new police station and kind of how we're going about that process and the next steps. And then Chief Mitchell went over, and Chief Mann has met with several departments around us have new stations and kind of do's and don'ts. And Chief Mitchell went over the fire station needs and trying to get another station located between 73 and 77. And kind of went over some fleet needs and things like that. But it was a great meeting and that's all I have. Any questions for me? Seeing none, Downtown District Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Downtown District Committee met on Friday, February 23rd. Dave Johnson, Darren Peterson, and myself were present. Darren Peterson was a few minutes early. It was great. Yeah, for the record. We talked briefly since it was our first committee meeting of the year, talked about the overall purpose of the committee, spending $500,000 that comes to us from the food and beverage tax revenue on downtown enhancements. So we talked overall, but then drilled down into some of the projects that we have been working on. As residents may have noticed, we have three four-way flashers that have popped up that we went through the procurement process last year to obtain, and that's at Ninth and Maple, Tenth and Hannibal, and then eventually Tenth and Clinton will have those as well. The full changeover between the current infrastructure and what is being placed there should be done before the Peony Festival. So that should be coming soon, and I think it looks great in our downtown district. We also talked about decorative crosswalks. So we currently have some of those in place now at Eighth and Maple and Ninth and Maple. We are, it's an ongoing project to continue to beautify our downtown. The next areas that will see those enhancements are at Tenth and Hannibal and Tenth and Division down by Seminary Park. Those will be a Peony themed since the Peony Festival has called Seminary Park home. We are also looking at how we can incorporate those across the river as well. So the new trail from Federal Hill Commons to Forest Park will also see some of those, and we are looking to incorporate a farmer's market theme for those. So those should be coming this year. We're getting specifics on pricing, but those will all come out of the Downtown District Fund. We also talked about overview of Streetscape project that will be coming at some point in downtown and what our goals are for that, as well as a brief parks update from Deputy Mayor Light. But all good things from Downtown District.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Finance Committee and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met February 22nd. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, Megan Wiles, Greg Connor, and myself. Andrew Murray discussed with us an economic development agreement, tax abatement authorization for Justice Companies LLC. We'll hear a little bit about that this evening. Jeff talked to us about the reestablishment of the city investment policies per IC 5-139. We had an update from Paul Gifford and Ally Powers from First Source Bank on our 2023 investment performance, and Caitlin Moss gave us an update on the cancellation of expired warrants. That and the claims doctor review come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Smith?
I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the claims and a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. On the previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance 040224 and ordinance authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to IC 5139-5.7. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller, and this is one of three items that you will have before you tonight, all related, all integrated in renewing our city investment policy. And the slight complexity in all of this is that two of them are a resolution, one of them's an ordinance, they follow different paths. This is the item that's an ordinance, but it's really a sub-area of the investment policy, and I'll talk about that more a little bit later. But this specific ordinance essentially authorizes the city, if we have an investment policy that is approved by you, that within that investment policy, we can establish an investment timeline or an investment horizon that allows a portion of the cash investments we have to be invested in investment interest with a duration of two to five years in length. And without this, we are just constrained by the overarching state law that does not allow a municipal government to invest in any instruments that are more than two years in length. And the reason to do this is essentially over time, at different times with different interest rate environments, sometimes it is advantageous to invest in some longer-term instruments to generate higher yields. So that's what it does. It doesn't cause any specific thing to happen. It just establishes a playing field in which our investment manager can make optimal choices for the city. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I would.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 04-2-24 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider resolution RC 624, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Justice at Promenade LLC. Andrew Murray.
Good evening, President Peterson, members of council. Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. I am pleased to say before you this evening to present a partnership agreement with the Justice Companies. They are proposing to develop real estate in the Promenade Development located generally at the northeast corner of State Road 32 and Little Chicago Road. With us tonight from the, and on behalf of Justice Companies is President and CEO Walt Justice, along with some of their key members of staff. As this council knows, Justice has made significant investments in our community, most recently in the Promenade Development that include the Promenade Apartments, which are up here at the north end of the development, but then most recently the Promenade Trails, which is the active adult, yeah, the active adult community, which is set to open later this year. And then in addition, you'll note on the screen, they have been able to secure and negotiate key establishments in the development, including the Learning Experience, the Meyer Grocery, the Pep Boys are really turning this development into a hub of activity and opportunity. And so the item for you, the proposed project outlined in the agreement is the relocation of the Justice Companies corporate headquarters, which would be located in the final 11-acre tract in the development. Turning your attention to the screen, again, this is a new office, corporate office headquarters, two stories spanning close to 20,000 square feet, which would house the 23 members of the Justice corporate staff. As you can see, it's of high quality and character, really rounds out the development out there. So what's our role in this partnership? The company's going to make an investment of 7.3 million to complete the project. We are proposing to invest in the project as well in the form of two ways. Number one would be a real property tax abatement, which would, we would offer to abate 80% of the taxes generated from this investment over a 10-year term. And then the second form would be we're going to provide support in covering the road impact fee assessment to the project, which is estimated to be about $25,000. So we'll go 50/50 on that in the partnership. Procedurally speaking, if all goes to plan tonight, this council can expect future business items to carry out the incentives and the obligations of this agreement before you, as well as other necessary approvals and permitting and entitlements to get this project properly approved and permitted and underway. With that, I will stop there. We are certainly grateful for Walt and his team and their trust and their investment to make in Noblesville, and we look forward to welcoming the Justice Companies to our community. So with that, I'll stop there. We did vet this with Chairman Davis in this council's finance committee, and it comes to you with a favorable recommendation.
What's the total investment?
7.3 million.
Okay. And the number of jobs?
23 will be retained and relocated to this development.
Thank you.
Andrew, an estimate, or perhaps for the Justice folks, a estimate as to occupancy?
What's that?
When would you expect the building to be occupied, completely occupied? I mean, all things being.
So I'll just, I'll clarify this. The Justice Companies will occupy about 17,000 square feet of the building, and then that leaves about 3,000 square feet of future economic development opportunities that will work in collaboration and partnership with them to land another tenant to fill out that building. So we hope to make that as soon as possible.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the investments you've made already in the community and not just the investment, but the quality of the investment. And then more importantly, the question I get asked most lately is, when is the Meyer going to open?
So the summer of this year, it'll be open.
Awesome. Can't get here fast enough. Any other questions?
I'll just comment, you know, this is in my district. I live it that way, so I'm always watching the stuff growing out there. I think it says a lot about somebody who wants to move their office in the backyard of something they're building. You know, that means to me, you're standing behind, you believe in the product that you're bringing up to Noblesville, and I love what I've seen here. Look forward to having you here in Noblesville.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would move that we approve resolution RC-6-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the resolution and a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Council to consider resolution RC 724 a declaratory resolution, designate an economic revitalization area for Justice at Promenade LLC and establishing a public hearing.
Thank you, President Peterson. Again, Andrew Murray, Director of Economic Development, sticking with the same project that we just discussed with your previous business item. This is a resolution which formally authorizes and approves the abatement, which is the obligation that we just discussed under the economic development agreement. So this is a two-step process. You're going to approve a declaratory resolution, and then we'll set the public hearing for your March 26th meeting, which we will present a confirmatory resolution and hold the required public hearing, and that'll be the last of the incentive portion of this partnership. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Swallow.
I impugn that we establish a public hearing for an economic revitalization area at the March 24th meeting.
Second.
There's a motion to establish a public hearing and a second. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-7-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Can't see Pete down there, but it looks like his hand was up.
Mr. President, I will clarify, it is March 26th is when our next meeting for this hearing takes place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to consider a resolution RC 1024, a resolution establishing an investment policy for the city of Noblesville. Jeff Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller again, and as promised. And as promised, this is another one of the three items that I referenced earlier and this is the core item. It's the actual city investment policy. And what the action is tonight is to stay in compliance with state law. An investment policy has to be adopted, but can't have a term of more than four years in duration. Previous investment policy is expiring March 1st, so this is renewing it. There are no changes to the investment policy. It's exactly the same as the existing investment policy, just with a new expiration date. And the investment policy covers things like general investment objectives, standards of care, investment parameters. All of those types of things are referenced in the investment policy. So with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them or proceed.
I don't have any questions, just a comment. We had a long conversation about this at finance and I'm really proud of all the work that you guys have done to make this such a sophisticated process. I think it's really important for the city and I think it goes a long way to steward public funds well. It takes a lot of work, but I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to echo Aaron's comments. You beat me to it, but Mr. Spalding, thank you for the detail that you provide and the knowledge of what is fairly complicated.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Finance. Thank you.
So no Bitcoin still?
It's not in the investment plan.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-10-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution, this is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. There's Pete. Now I can see him. Okay, nine oh.
My big head's on the line.
Right. It's Mr. Davis is the problem. Counsel to consider resolution RC 1124, a resolution authorizing investment of public funds pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5. Mr. Spalding.
All right. So the third of the three items in this is probably the simplest, most straightforward item. And essentially what it says, again, defined by state law, is that it, with the authorization of the council, we can pursue investments in financial institutions that are certified by the state treasurer within the state of Indiana. So it just increases the range of options of places where we can look for investments. And without this, we'd be more tightly constrained, but gives the opportunity to, you know, basically look for the banks that are seeking, that are offering the highest yield, so.
Any questions, Jeff? Please go.
Okay. Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-11-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. There's Pete. Okay. Thank you. Counsel to receive the annual report of expired warrants pursuant to IC 5-11-10.5 for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. Caitlin Moss.
Hi, Caitlin Moss, Deputy Controller. So before you, you have a report which lists out all of our checks that are at least two years' age, so they are considered expired. This is just putting into a public forum which of these are being officially voided. So if there's any questions on any of them, I'd be happy to answer.
I always check for my name first and I didn't see it. But again, these checks, even if they're canceled, a person could still come and claim the funds.
Correct. Yes, they could come back and we would just rewrite a new check that's not expired.
There's everybody vote on this. This is just for discussion. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. On to council comments. None. Okay. We are adjourned.